Okay, good morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise to the table to open a prayer and pledge allegiance before we convene in the commissioners' public meeting. The gracious and loving God, we thank you for this day you've granted. In this Thanksgiving season, when so many are suffering across the world, let us be eternally grateful for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Let us follow your example of love and compassion by reaching out in the ways we can to check on the elderly and families that are suffering hardships. And during this Thanksgiving season, let us take time to give thanks to you, Lord. Help us to walk in your wisdom and grace daily. Give us a spirit of generosity and share your loving kindness to each other. And Lord, we ask you to guide us as we discuss the proposed budget going into next year. Pray for your wisdom to guide each of us as we move towards a balanced and final budget in the months and years ahead. These things we humbly bring to you this morning in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good morning. At this time, I'll convene the commissioners' public meeting. I believe we have some additions, some changes, Director?
Yes, Commissioner, seeking your approval to make some additions and revisions that were not previously. First is the addition of information item 3.2, elected official personnel actions. In the Controller's Office, change account to title to account to slash second deputy controller on the TDA. Add under the salary board 4.3, controller, change account to title to account to slash second deputy controller on the TDA. And then change action item 5.3, vote to approve a bid award to Michael Baker International for the Lycum Hazard Plan update amount of $128,867.
Okay, motion accept the additions and changes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll sign.
On their side?
Aye.
And moving on, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll sign.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any public comments on agenda items only at this time? Okay, hearing done, then we'll move on to, we have a proclamation this morning. Mr. Messina?
Yeah, we have a proclamation, November is Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month. Whereas the safety of children in Lycum County is of the utmost importance. And whereas thousands of infants in the United States die each year due to placement in unsafe sleeping environment, infant fatalities caused by unsafe sleeping environments are entirely preventable. And whereas the safest sleeping environment for infants is alone in an empty crib while lying on their backs with a tightly fitted sheet as well as warm, comfortable sleepwear. And whereas the National Institute of Child Health and Human Development provides family members and childcare providers with access to resources about creating safe sleep environments for infants on their website. And now therefore, we, the commissioners of Lycum County, hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month. In witness thereof, we have set our hand and seal on this 21st day of November 2024, Lycum County Commissioners Scott M. Metzger, Chairman, Mark C. Swartman, Vice Chairman, and Mark Messina, Secretary.
Chuck and Keith, like them ups? Get moving, Dad.
I just like to say, I don't think it's coincidental that it's November because the best of us were born in November.
Are you saying that because it's his birthday?
It's today, your birthday. See, as I said, the best of us were born in November.
Is actually, is today your birthday?
It is.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any prepared speech, but this, it's hard to believe this, we started cribs for kids in 2008. It came out of discussions at dinner. My wife just retired last, this October, last October from OB after 45 years of delivering babies. And so she's, and tragically, she saw the babies that we saw. Because the ones, parents made bad choices, babies in unsafe sleep environments. And those discussions came up at dinner and, you know, we said, we gotta do something. We are 16 years later, and we're still keeping the program alive. It's all been grant funded, donations, whatever we gotta do to keep that and save kids' operation to do. So it's just, we know we've saved lives. We don't know specifically, but we've had periods where we've gone three years without an infant death in an unsafe sleep. So people that say this is not, it's just hogwash. Babies do die in unsafe sleep environments. We see. It's tragic, and we have to deal with, pick up the pieces, families. The hardest part of our job. So thank you for your efforts and support to keep this program going. We've met with Representative Joe Hamm. He's doing the same proclamation down in Harrisburg, so it's not in forefront of people's minds, so.
Oh, boy. If I ever told you I really hate public speaking, like I really.
Oh, we thought you loved it.
All right, so good morning. Thanks for having us again this year to talk about infant safe sleep. When it comes to infant safe sleep again, Commissioner Messina had already talked about it, but we just keep it back to the ABCs, alone on their back in a safety approved crib with a fitted sheet and nothing else. I think it's incredibly important with the upcoming holidays, we continue to spread awareness about safe sleep. As we know that some families will be traveling, which can cause some challenging issues in finding a safe sleep environment, both for adults and children when you're at other people's houses. Given that we're the week before Thanksgiving, I want to say I'm thankful that we have not had an infant death due to unsafe sleep in 2023 or 2024. I listened to Commissioner Messina talk about becoming lazy last week and how he talked about Commissioner Metzger and how he says he's not been lazy as a commissioner here, and I kinda, kinda stood with me because on Friday I reached out to Mary Rose and I was like, I guess we should do something for infant safe sleep. But it's one of those things, it's, it kinda tears a band-aid off a wound when we talk about it. It feels so good to go those years that we don't have these deaths. And so, but we know it's because we're putting the effort in. It's a state requirement now, any baby being born in one of these hospitals, their parents have to receive safe sleep education. And unfortunately, sometimes they still choose to do otherwise, and I, as a mom, have to believe that I might not always do it black and white. I do what I think's best for my child, so I just hope that we don't lose them to repercussions because of those things. That being said, too, I'm really thankful for people in our community, not just for cribs for kids, that they identify reasons, issues in the community, and reasons why we should be doing something, something preventable like infant safe sleep. And they come together, they don't just talk about it, they figure out how to do something. And I'm blessed that Chuck and Yale happen to be my parents, and that's exactly what they did with cribs for kids, so. I've been really blessed to kind of run the program the last 12 years through grant funds and donations. Through that, we've provided hun- hundreds of portable cribs now to families while continuing to preach the safe sleep message. I had actually just received a phone call to any of those who have heard the radio message. I am partnered with a woman who lost her baby. She was co-sleeping with him. She runs what's called the Infant Safe Sleep Foundation. It's not local, but it's on Facebook. So she talks about how she co-slept with her child and he died, and it's a radio ad that we have right now running through seed kids and I had a woman call just 10 minutes before this meeting saying that I offended her by that and that we need to take it down and to reconsider. And I said, well, the problem is, I'm not here to offend people. I'm here to let people know that this happens. We have moms in our counties who are, have empty arms because their babies were in unsafe sleep situation. So we're gonna continue to push the message to the best means that I have and our biggest thing is that if you can't afford a safe sleep environment, we're gonna provide you free of charge. You're gonna have something. As long as we're here, that's gonna be our philosophy to keep this program going to prevent these deaths, so. But I just thought it was right to give them a shout out since they started, and she officially retired, so it's the first year she could come. So I made it a big deal that she had to come this year.
I have a few things while you guys are up here. Number one, since you retired, we have openings in the coroner's office.
We don't have butts.
Joe used to be, I would wrap them into the world. But every baby, he wants, he wants snuggles. All about it.
Didn't care, so.
When you talk about the stay, unstable sleep environments, and you know, I, I didn't, you don't even think about this stuff until you have kids, and then at the hospital, they go through, through some of these parenting classes. Co-sleeping is, is one of the most dangerous, if not the most dangerous. I mean, you forget how little babies are until you see a baby, to understand how they could get suffocated or. I mean, is that the leading cause? Is it?
A lot of this stuff is asphyxiation or babies just being on fluffy blankets. I mean, our, our county, it's been a lot of co-sleeping, unfortunately. Babies being put face down, babies, the heaviest thing is their head. So if they don't have that musculature build up yet, and they're little and they're face down, they can't fight themselves away from a blanket. So, yeah, we can.
Sleeping on sofas.
Sofas and getting wedged in sofas, yeah.
Arm of a sofa or rolling face down and they don't have.
The other thing that's fascinating about this topic to me was my first child had reflux relatively severely. And they told us to sleep her on her stomach and to angle them, to prop the mattress up and it helped. And after going through the classes, where we're like, we're supposed to sleep on the back, back to sleep, back to sleep is what they always used to tell us. And then my mom said, well, we were, we raised you, they told us to sleep you on your stomach. So there's a generational.
I was a generational gap.
This program started in 2004.
Okay. So, yeah, so that was the first thing, so.
And we have that, just the last two weeks, I had two grandparents, God bless them, who took over four grandchildren each, and they reached out, and I actually, they had to get whole-sized cribs because these kiddos were a little bit older, but we see it more and more, unfortunately, with opioid epidemic, that grandparents are raising their grandchildren and that there is that generational gap. So they, mom and dad might have gotten the safe sleep education in the hospital, but unfortunately, they're not raising their kids. Now grandparents are stepping in, so we hope to educate all of them as well.
It's an easy thing to do because especially first-time parents, you, you're running on no sleep.
Yep.
And it's easy to doze off, or you put your child down on a couch for a few minutes, and next thing you know, it could roll over and and so it's, it's, it's something that can happen in a split second. So we had to bring the awareness to, and to make sure that if you're running low on sleep, that you have a backup there that is, is there to help you.
Yeah, we have local resources. We've got snugglers, volunteer snugglers here.
We're, we're very blessed to have the Keesland family in our county. Very dedicated. I don't think you guys ever have a normal dinner hour.
No.
And your schedules are insane. So we want to thank each one of you for your, for your service. Forty-five years of delivering baby is, babies are. You know, I, I'm out at PMC daily right now because my father-in-law is out there recovering from a stroke and and you hear the lullaby come over. That means a baby's being, being, being born. And you smile when you hear that. I've heard a couple of them when I've been out there. And you just smile because you know a new life's coming into the world and and you hope for the best for them. But thank you for each one of you for what you do and what you've done. I'm sure Chuck will keep you busy.
She's already got stuff. She's doing nurses on her jar. Now she wants to do a cuddler program possibly for the nursery at the hospital, and so if anyone needs a babysitter, she's for someone who doesn't like public speaking.
We have a proclamation we'd like to present to you, get a picture.
Sounds good.
Commissioners, I'm gonna request that we make a change in order of the.
We're gonna be sorry for now.
Oh, goodness, I should relax. Okay.
Remove the salary.
Reach up ahead of 4.0. Due to several people in the audience with their schedules.
Okay.
We'll recess, the commissioners' public meeting. It's time for the salary board, we're convening a salary board at this time.
Okay, the first item I have is vote to approve the salary board minutes from the October 31st, 2024 meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second, on their side?
Aye. Vote to approve the following salary board actions: Transition of existing prison bail release program employees to the Lycum County Courts. The anticipated date for this, I believe, is January 5th, 2025.
We have Judge Butts in the audience, along with representatives from the courts. They'll come up, please, and explain why they're asking for this to be transitioned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Since 2010, when I became President Judge, I've worked very hard to balance my responsibilities of making sure that the judicial district is following the applicable laws and rules with finding ways to assure that the criminal justice system works efficiently and fairly. In the early 1990s, a program was developed called Supervised Bail and designed as a relief valve for the county prison who enabled pretrial inmates to be released with reporting requirements to guarantee their compliance with both release conditions and appear in court. In 2015, Supervised Bail was designated by me as the bail agency therefore expanding their responsibilities, but it was still separate from the courts. I'm requesting this change and asking for the commissioners to support this to create a pretrial services division of the adult probation office. This will enable me as the President Judge to utilize my authority under the Pennsylvania Rules of Criminal Procedure to use all of the members of the existing bail agency to establish a program with a goal toward improving pretrial outcomes. To gather data from those cases to determine if what we're doing is improving those outcomes, and what are those outcomes? Reducing recidivism and increasing pretrial attendance in court. What this change does not do is dictate a certain type of bail or eliminate the use of monetary bail. This change does not lead to, nor does it create, a cashless bail system. Each judge is free to set the bail they think is appropriate by being provided with more information about the individuals appearing before them. So in summary, making this change will allow the courts to implement processes to ensure that the judges making bail decisions, which are common pleas and MDJ, have as much relevant information as possible about the defendants before setting bail. And this change will allow the courts to ensure that defendants who are released on bail are appropriately supervised by the bail agency. Questions?
Yeah, Judge, as you know, we, we've done a lot of due diligence on this. We've looked at many aspects of how you manage this program going forward.
Sure.
The biggest pushback that we've heard from the public, and I appreciate you've already kind of touched upon it, is the cashless bail. That, that becomes the, the big negative. But ju- just as an educational, for me and, and the public, you just said each, each judge basically can do their own, so would there truly be any difference if you chose today to have a cashless bail for one of, one of the people in front of you?
No, we do that now.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So there, there really would be no difference of what bail falls under. If, if you as the President Judge really wanted to push a cashless bail, you could have done that in your courtroom all along.
Individually, sure, but this doesn't change the whole system.
It doesn't change that system.
What it enable us, it enables us to do by overseeing the quality and the tools that are used gives MDJs, who are the entry of the criminal justice system, the maximum amount of information, probably so much more than they even have at 3 o'clock in the morning when they have somebody brought before them for arraignment, for bail, that gives them that information to be able to make more effective bail decisions. And bail can be monetary, it can be monetary of a percentage, it can be a promise to appear, which doesn't require any money. And any of those types of bail could also have additional conditions imposed upon them. You can't have contact with the victim in a case. You can't, you have to go for a drug and alcohol evaluation or a mental health assessment. All of those things can be conditions of bail. What we will do by, by essentially scooping Supervised Bail under the cloak of the courts is to just give them the authority to continue to essentially do what they're doing, but also bring evidence-based practices that other counties and the Commonwealth use in helping determine some of that information for the MDJs. Like there are tools out there that give a risk assessment as to whether or not this person has a risk of showing up for court or failing to, whether they have a risk of future violent behavior. All, I think, are really important things to know as a bail authority in determining what the appropriate bail is to be set. Guarantee future court appearance, and the other primary thing is public safety. This isn't going to affect, in fact, if you ask me, not just because I'm making the request, but this increases more public safety because it will intensify the supervision of people on bail. It will enable us to see everybody that comes before the MDJ, not those who may be just in jail hoping for intensive or supervised bail, as we call. We're gonna lay hands on everybody so we can have an assessment on everybody. Because probably a larger majority than people realize do not have to post any money on bail. They merely promise to the MDJ, yes, I'll show up. And those individuals, the first time they appear before the MDJ is when they have their preliminary hearing. They're not those people that are arrested on sight and brought before the MDJ. Those we know a lot more about than those who come in on a summons. And this is a way to gather more information about that population. And like I said, guarantee public safety, but also guarantee future appearance in court because our bench warrants are going up too. And we want to get a better handle on those, so when people are designated to appear, actually, they appear. I hope that helped you.
Yeah, I, I think what I want to clarify for the public is that this does not create a cashless bail system, and if, and if that's something that was wanted in Lycum County, could have already been done without this managerial change.
Absolutely.
Of bail. That being said, my other, my other clarification, just again, probably more for the public, is that it is set, set up as a separate entity under its, so you, you're always obviously the President Judge, but then typically you set another judge as the.
Well, I am the judge of the adult probation. I am the supervising judge.
So then, and it'll be set up the same way, the separate super, supervising judge, so that, that all stays the same.
Correct.
As well.
But it's a separate division. It will be separate letterhead, it will be separate, so that there's not going to be a question because I think someone had asked me that, well, what happens if you're shorthanded for sentencing or fees? That's not their job. Their job is totally pretrial services. Now, might there come a time where person on supervision gets arrested for a new offense and the MDJ wants a higher level of bail supervision? They're gonna have to talk, but we're never gonna have two people being supervised by both sides of the adult probation office. In that situation, my request would be to allow them to be supervised by the adult probation officer because they know more about the offender than even pretrial services would. Because they've already been on supervision with them. But there is, we usually call it in, in a law practice, a Chinese wall. We know what's going on on the other side, but we don't cross that wall. And that's the expectation, is that they're gonna be trained in pretrial processes and programming, even more so than they already have been. And we look forward to working with everyone that's in the Supervised Bail Program right now. That we just, like I said, scoop them under, under our umbrella, listen to them, talk to them about what their ideas are, and come up with come up with a plan on how to capitalize on their strengths, but also understand the missions or the goals that we have, one of which is really important, which is data collection, which we really don't have at all in the pretrial process.
And, and the last one, which will be controversial in the, in the media as well, we have two gentlemen that currently work in, in the bail program that are, I believe, elected officials. And obviously, as, as the law goes, court officials have to be not political. You, you had mentioned, and, and just reiterate that you are willing to look at allowing them to continue their current term, but they will not be allowed to rerun in a political aspect. Is that correct based upon the law as well?
Yes, under the Hatch Act, elected officials in the judiciary can't be political, except in the year that we're up for reelection or retention. Can't have anyone who works for the courts be political. But because we want to scoop this existing program over, we're aware that some people have taken elected positions. It's not my intent to look at it. My intent is to honor their commitments to that elected position until the end of their existing term so that they can continue to finish what they're doing, however they are restricted from running for reelection.
Thank you.
Judge, I had a concern I share with you, working in the system for three decades, was that the bail is pretrial. Defendant has not given up any of his rights, whereas probation's post-trial, where they have limited rights. And how do you bind those two in the same department? So our proposal to the courts was was to make sure they were a separate entity under the umbrella. You have domestics, you have juvenile, you have adult probation right now under the courts. But bail would stand alone as another separate entity. Our concern is to make sure it doesn't get intertwined with probation, because then you start to intertwine rights. And that's, that's my main concern, is to make sure they're, they are separate.
And you have my promise that they are. I've, we've shared with the commissioners on a number of occasions when we've met about our concerns about some of the practices that were being done by the pretrial bail department. And I think that having it under the adult probation office serves a couple of different benefits. Not crossing that Chinese wall, obviously, because I don't want that to happen. I'm responsible for the 29th Judicial District. And so if the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court calls me in and says, what's going on down there in Lycum County, I have to be able to show that I am not commingling pretrial and post-sentence individuals, that I'm not holding them to the same standards. And I'm fully aware of what they are and what my responsibilities are. But the benefit of doing it through the adult probation office, and I've explained this to several assistant district attorneys who really like this idea, is the fact that whatever services and programings that we've developed through the adult probation office are also available to people in the pretrial system. Defendants, a large majority of them, entered, or they resolved their case by guilty, by disposition, not by trial. And from very early on, they know that they want to accept responsibility. So having the opportunity to share those resources, GIO, West Branch, just a number of other programs with that pretrial population enables them to show the district attorney's office, who they're hoping to get a favorable plea agreement from, that they're willing to address the underlying problem that brought them into the criminal justice system rather than just basically treading water until they have no choice but to either go to trial or enter a plea. And the assistant district attorneys like that idea because now they can specifically, because they know what goes on post-sentence, they can ask for those conditions as part of bail when we have that meaningful bail hearing with everyone involved, which, again. With everyone involved, which again, beats the public safe, greater public safe.
And our concern is, is anyone's gonna lose their employment.
Absolutely not. That's why I said, I tried to use the, the imagery of just scooping them and push and bringing them over under the. You've got a structure already there. It's gonna remain. I can't control whether or not people are gonna want to continue to work with the courts as their supervisor, but. The openings are there, the positions, we welcome all of them. And if this goes through. Then we, we're prepared to meet with them as quickly as we can to explain.
I know it's been stressful for those officers because they've heard lots of rumors and they've been stuck in their bone. And I want to compliment, we have one in the audience today, I want to compliment them for their work. They're very dedicated to do a great job. Harry Rogers has done a great job as, as a team leader. And I want to thank each one of those officers for, for their service.
This doesn't diminish at all in any way what they've done up until this date. If you ask me, it, it affords them the opportunity to expand on what they've been doing. By sharing with us their ideas and helping us create this new idea of pre-trial services.
I think uh, one of the other things that should be mentioned, when we first started hearing of this months ago. You know, we started learning about the whole process and we find out right now it's under the prison. So we went to the people at the prison. And they're like, why is it under you and why, how did it start? And I, I think they said it started with a grant. Way back in the day when the whole program was just starting. But in, in talking to those guys, they're. So when you look around the state, you look at structurally, it doesn't really belong under us. We're not trying to get rid of it. We're not, we've had it, we're used to it, we're good. But when you think logically, like it, it shouldn't be under us. So then we sat back and we're like, well, okay, if, if it doesn't belong there, we are gonna move it. Or should we move it? The courts want it. We, we. Did our due diligence. We're like, what if we put it under the district attorney? And the district attorney said, I'm not allowed to have it. That, that's the law. So we have looked around, but this isn't just like. You know, somebody, you know, one group were trying to take something from another group. Like when we looked at it. And, and the prison did start with, like, it's under us right now and it doesn't really belong under us. So a change is probably necessary. Where should the change go? It was the question that, like, that we've kicked around now for months.
Judge, how many counties across the state have it under the courts? Do you know?
There are, I think thirty, eight have their own. Because they're much, much larger counties and their adult probation office doesn't manage it. I think eight do it separately as not even. It's like a separate court's office, so it even elevates it. But then there are at least twenty-one that are embedded in their adult probation offices. And the federal system, their probation, federal probation and parole has a division, pre-trial services as well. So it's not a new or an unusual concept. It's something that's embraced by, there are sixty judicial districts. So by at least a third of them.
Guys, have any other questions?
No, that was my last one. Just, you know, again, more for the public that this is. You know, there, there's three kind of different concepts. That are operating currently in the state of Pennsylvania with different counties. And we're just joining one of those. We're moving it to, to match another county because we can learn from other counties and the way they do things as well. So. Appreciate your time.
I'm willing to answer whatever additional questions.
We have a bill officer that took his own time to come here. I'd like to give him the opportunity to speak if he wants to. Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you for being here. I knew you took your own time to be here. I want to make sure you had the opportunity to be here if you wanted to be. So thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Looking for a motion.
Is there a motion to uh move the prison building lease program employees to Lecombe County courts?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All fair side. Is there anyone opposed?
Yes, the controller votes no.
Thank you. Carry three, one.
Um, the next item I have is in the controller's office, change the accountant to title to accountant to slash second deputy. On the T D A. There is no um. Any, it's just a title change.
Thank you. Uh, was the motion accepted?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All fair side. That's carry four, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. At this time, we'll adjourn. We'll go back to two point out. So Nikki.
Okay.
Take off what we left out.
All right, presented for your ratification are invoices due November twenty seventh, twenty twenty-four to be paid on November twentieth. Twenty twenty-fourth, the amount of one million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars and nineteen cents. Seventy percent of that is out of the general fund at eight hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and six, forty-six cents. Nine point six one are from act thirteen, that's a hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and six cents. Uh, ten point six one percent is out of other grants, a hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars, fifty-three cents. Five point seven seven percent is out of RMS, that's seventy-three thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. And three point five six is out of escrow at forty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, uh, is there a motion accepted, counsel payable?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All fair side.
And I have uh presented for your ratification are the election payments due to poll workers in the polling locations. For the presidential election that was held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion accepted.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki.
All right, moving on to information.
Budget.
Good morning, everyone. So um, it is my pleasure to formally present Lecombe County's proposed twenty twenty-five budget for your review and consideration. The document I present today reflects the commissioner's commitment to providing the highest quality of services and programs to support the citizens. Of Lecombe County through an intensive collaborative budget review process involving all county departments and offices. This budget also reflects the reality of running a county in the wake of spiking inflation, addressing decades of deferred capital projects. The effects of significant employee turnover and transition and acknowledging the conclusion of access to federal COVID-nineteen relief funds. Despite these realities, the twenty twenty-five budget process proposes a no tax increase for the eighth consecutive year. And the county's general mileage rate will remain the same, six point five mils. The total twenty twenty-five proposed budget is a hundred and thirty-two million, six hundred four-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. The budget represents a total operating budget of a hundred and seventeen million, six hundred four-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars. And a capital budget of fourteen million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. This is a twenty-three point oh-three percent decrease over the current calendar year budget. A budget represents a seven point two eight percent increase in revenues. And then a twenty-three point oh-three percent decrease in expenditures to fund county operations. As itemized in our general special revenue, debt service and enterprise fund categories. Pre-presisting concerns have been recurrent to me over the last several budget years. First, the general fund consistently experiences expenditure growth that outpaces revenue. And second, ongoing and rising inflation. And third, the capital budget lacks a dedicated funding source. The continual rise in the cost of delivering services has not been matched by the corresponding revenue growth leading to a structural deficit. To bridge this gap, the fund balance has been used to balance the budget during the last several years to facilitate. And enable the financing of crucial infrastructure enhancement, enhancements and capital expenditures. As a result, this has decreased our fund balance. Although we still have much work to do to get a structurally balanced budget, recognizing and addressing these budget issues now is certainly step in the right direction. We will continue to work on making significant budget cuts prior to the budget being passed on December nineteenth. Ensure we have a more stable fund balance. The commissioners and I fully understand and recognize the importance to maintain an adequate fund balance level. However, raising taxes will be our last resort until all financial due diligence has been done. I feel strongly we need solutions and new ways to improve, not higher taxes. This means we must continue to be prudent in upcoming budget years. We will continue to examine expenses with a critical eye, make tough choices and implement budget reduction strategies. With this mindset, I feel confident the county will move financially forward and achieve long-term financial stability. When I took on this new position in February of twenty twenty-four, I promised to improve the budget and budgeting process to make better informed financial decisions. To improve our overall, overall financial health. As I deliver my first budget as the director of financial management, I feel strongly I've delivered on that promise. I remain committed to working as a team to maintain the services that our residents expect. For running a fiscally responsible budget that continues to find new and innovative ways to improve, grow and meet future challenges. I feel confident that as we continue to work together, we will continue to move this county forward. I would like to take a moment to thank all who have contributed to this budget process. First, this budget would not be possible without the support of the board of commissioners. Thank you for entrusting me with this opportunity. I am grateful to each of the commissioners for your leadership and fiscal stewardship. I would also like to thank my amazing financial management team who are here with me today. Um, Heather Lehman to the left, my chief budget officer, Brian Ciotta. Um, Lisa Ames and Shanene Edmonds. It's a privilege to work alongside this team every day. It's a challenge, but they, we get the job done. Um, a special thanks goes out especially to Heather. Um, she's a joy to work with, um, extremely knowledgeable and a very talented accountant. Um, she has been invaluable throughout this entire process and I really could not have done it without her. Um, together, um, we make a great team. And a thanks um goes out, of course, to our entire Lecombe County leadership team and all our hardworking county employees. Each team member has been invaluable in their cooperation, support and commitment to this project process because it hasn't been easy. After a comment from the commissioners, I would like then to bring up um Heather, she can um highlight the budget highlights and. Then we'll take public comment.
Gentlemen. Um, no, I'd like to thank uh the financial management team as well. How you've been under all the stress in the last month to pull all this together. Even if it's as simple as making copies of everybody's budget. So we appreciate that. Appreciate the team a hundred percent. And I know, I was very shocked in, in October when we were told we had no money to get through the rest of the year. And a lot of efforts through our RMS team, uh, and our financial management team, we, we found the money, we came up with the money, we're gonna get through the year. But we're not gonna do this every year for the next three years. So we're gonna fix, fix the problems we have. We did. Uh, and again, to, to Maya's point, thanks to the entire Lecombe County staff for reducing their budgets. Uh, it's, it's not very often you're gonna hear a twenty-three percent reduction in expenditures. That's huge. That's huge and that's a lot of people's efforts. Um, but those are the directions that the taxpayers have asked us to go. And, and we're gonna do that first to Maya's point before we have to have a tax increase. If in fact, we have to have one, but we will cut expenses first, which is what I think everybody's looking for us to do. And, and, and again, can't thank everybody enough with the, the efforts.
Todd, I would just say with this job, the budget is really where the rubber meets the road. And you, it's, it's also when we get in situations like we're in, it's also the place where you don't make friends. When people come to you and ask for money and you say no. And then when you go back to them and say, by the way, you need to cut more out of your budget than you already had. So um, it is not a fun time. Uh, it is, it's a very important time. And in life, you know, a lot of the things you do that are very important are not always fun. Um, I, I applaud you guys who have really put your nose to the grindstone. And um, and again, you, you, when you're delivering bad news. Um, and I don't know if it's bad news, but it's, you know, you just can't have that this year and we can't do that this year and we can't afford it. Um, you know, people don't run up and give you a big hug. But uh, that's what we had to do and um, I do, I applaud the people who had the fortitude to do it. And um, and moving forward, as Mark said, we don't, we don't plan to ever be in this position again. And we will be diligent um from day one. And um, we really think not only, I was, I was talking to Scott yesterday after a different meeting. Not just if we kind of addressed it now, but we've set a path going forward of, of financial intelligence. And that's really what we.
Yes, this, this goes back about my, about a decade, you think?
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, and then using a fund balance to try to, to operate off of. And uh, that's not how you operate a household. It shouldn't be the way we operate a county. What has happened in the past is a lot of these capital projects have been paid for out of the, the cash fund balance. Instead of stuff that was generational. Being moved out on a bond. And uh, and that's what we're looking at, generational projects. I'm going out on a bond for those. Uh, that way we're paying a little bit each year on that, on that bond, on those generational projects to keep our fund balance healthy. And uh, so as we correct that, uh, our, our goal is to balance a budget that has been balanced for, for over a decade. And uh, and at the same time, make those cuts that we have to make. Uh, I, I want to thank my colleagues who are working as a team. And basically the entire county, department heads, the elected officials. Everybody has done their part. Work as a team to cut down the spending because you can go out on capital projects on a bond. And complete those capital projects. But if the spending continues to increase, you'll never solve your problem. And uh, so we want to do that. Um, inflation costs we hope will come down in the years to come. Uh, that's been a major factor also. But when you see a, like an HVAC system that the courthouse uh had begun to discuss ten years ago. Uh, that was not completed at the time. And here we are ten years later and we're, we're having to be faced with that, put that in because it's not working properly. And the costs have, have gone up four hundred percent. In that ten years, uh, that's a challenge that we're faced with. So that's just one, one challenge. So uh, we'll continue to, to make those tough decisions. Uh, raising taxes is the last option. It will not be the first. It's the last and we'll do whatever we have to do to make sure we get to a balanced budget. So that when we pass this off to the next board commissioners, uh, things are going in the right direction. And that we want that, we want to thank all the elected officials, the department heads, all the employees that have done their part to help do this. Uh, because it's a team effort. And uh, we move forward cautiously optimistic. And, and that's how we're gonna move forward. Thank you.
Again, the, the biggest thing I want to highlight is, is I'm, I'm excited to be part of a, of a team that, that actually. Cut a budget by twenty-three percent. I, I don't, I don't think we can repeat that enough. That is just a huge, huge. Um. Agenda item that we, we looked at and were able to. Get created, get to start. So I, I'm excited to be part of that.
Yep.
And I am too.
Yep, none of us want that stress.
No.
Last year we went into a, into a budget season, we.
Right, right out of the gate, I uh.
Go right out of the gate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Maya.
You're welcome.
And we have a meeting tonight, a public meeting tonight at six o'clock. Right here in this room, and we'll present it to the public and anyone's welcome to attend. Uh, that uh, has any questions for us?
And I just wanted Heather to go through some of the things, you know, put these numbers and she can give a little bit more detail on those numbers and what they make up.
And, and thank you to you and your team because this, this won't be possible without your hard efforts also. Thank you.
Okay, um. I hear C is we have it broken down for a whole budget summary of all funds. Um, general fund. With revenue makes up fifty point three eight percent of the revenue coming in. Um, special revenue funds is the next one, which makes up eighteen point seven four percent. Um, next we have is our debt service. Which is revenue, is revenue that actually the county will be paying. So that is a part of the general fund, but we like to outline it separate so you can see that it is offsetting. Um, the enterprise fund, which is RMS, makes up eighteen point two three percent. And then the fund balance, which we will be using, will be making up twelve point six six percent of our revenue coming in. And then with. Um, our expenditures. You can see that obviously we balance in all four different funds that we have within the county. Um, for general fund, that will make up sixty point five eight percent of our expenses for the year. Special revenue fund will be eighteen point seven four percent. Uh, debt service makes up two point four five percent. So it's a very small percentage of our overall budget goes to debt service. And then the enterprise fund, which is our landfill, makes up eighteen point two three percent of our expenses. And then we just kind of outlined um what the revenue sources are.
And then we just kind of outlined what the revenue sources are, which makes up taxes, licenses, and permits, intergovernmental revenue such as federal, state, and local, charges for services, which are fees that specific departments collect on a yearly basis, sell of county products. Usually, that is with, you'll see that more with RMS, the landfill brings in revenue that way. Interest, which is on our investments we have with county bank accounts and other CDs and such that we have. Cost fines and forfeitures, that's collected by the county's cost and fines department. Miscellaneous is just revenue, anything from rent to telephone fees at the prison. Just miscellaneous, it does not fit into other categories. Our other sources represents the operating transfers. So there are subsidies that the county pays for with grants. That would be the revenue that we would receive. And then the Fund Balance, which represents the difference between the total actual financing sources and total actual expenditures at the close of the fiscal year. And this is a carryover from the previous year. Obviously, going into 2025, we're projecting to have a fund balance of 20.8. And then with our expenses, that just is broken out as well. There's general governmental expenses, judicial, public safety, public works, human services, cultural recreation, conservation and development, debt service, miscellaneous, capital assets, and other sources as well. So you can see the biggest contributor is usually, obviously, your admin cost is one of them, which is our salary and benefits, as well as public works, which makes up our landfill. And then public safety is a third that would have. And then we wanted to show you a comparison from the budget from the previous year to this year, where you will see that they were operating, projected to operate with a deficit of negative 48.7 million. This year, we are going to be operating with a balanced budget thanks to using our fund balance. This will go, our fund balance will go down. We are projected to make more cuts between now and when the budget goes, gets formal approval on the 19th of December. And then we just want to outline our proposed capital projects because they make up a good portion of what our expenses are for, for 2025. But total capital inventory repress across from all funds is roughly 15 million, which is an 11.1 million decrease over the 2024 current budget. The total county general capital equals 11.6 million, of which 8.7 million will be using county general funds. We also will be using roughly 2.0 million worth of revenue from grants and Act 13 funds to cover the other part. Total Enterprise Capital, which is the landfill, equals 3.4 million, which they did a lot of cutting on projects and kind of, you know, went through and said, what can wait, what is necessary? So we greatly appreciate because they did a lot of work to get that down. They were probably over 16 million going into 2025's budget. And outlining major capital projects expected in 2025 include ongoing construction of the newly purchased Coroner Building, which is set to be completed next year. Office moves such as the register recorder, adult probation, and the sheriff's office as well. We also have major building repairs, one of them being the roof of the prison is in desperate need of being repaired. That will happen next year. The DPS Radio Project, which is ongoing from previous years, which they're hoping will be completed in 2025 as well. And then we also have ongoing technology requirements. And we have the mandated ADA improvements to county polling places that was given to us by the Department of Justice. So we will be doing Phase Two in 2025. We've already done the first phase this year. And then we just wanted to outline reassessment. That process will begin, has begun already in June of this past year. But you will start seeing expenses that will be divided out between the next three years. The cost is not all in one year, so that helps the county as well. And we would just like to outline that this is the first reassessment in Cumming County since 2004. Doing regular reassessments ensures that your property is assessed based on the current market values rather than on a market value from 20 years ago. And without a reassessment, all the properties will continue to pay the same amount of taxes. So this is very important to complete. And then just as a reminder, we do have the preliminary budget online for you to look at. We also have hard copies as well in the Commissioner's Office, the Treasurer's Office, the Controller's Office, and Financial Management as well. And you can also find a copy at the James V. Brown Library. And like Commissioner Metzger said, we do have a town hall meeting tonight in this room from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then just as another note, please know that any adjustments that we have been making since Monday, November 18th, until final approval will be announced as well. And then that concludes our presentation. We'll now open it up for any public comment.
Thank you. Any public comments?
Yes.
Well, just like that, this is a proposed budget, not the final budget. Continue to work on this. We want that fund balance up higher. We want to get it up another 10 million. And because that, we want to walk into 2025, so we're between 12 and 14 million. And we feel that by moving some more cuts, making some more cuts, and then moving the capital projects out on the bond going into the next year, we'll be able to achieve that goal.
Yeah, and part of, you know, what I tend to do, because we haven't had that done, is I tend to do maybe forecasting so that we're not having all of these capital projects in many years. We're spreading them out and for financial sense and stability.
One good thing that Maya and her team have implemented is quarterly reviews, which is something that we wanted to do five years ago, and we couldn't because COVID hit right away, and then we had lack of staff. And so thank you for your team picking that goal up and implementing it because that helps the departments every quarter. They know what's going on, and moving forward is much more effective accounting and efficient.
You have one public comment or question? MG. Burning the budget, where are our cash reserves? Has any thought been given to the anticipated restructuring of the federal monetary system? Our cash reserves in our bank account?
Yeah, that's the fund balance that we're using.
Yeah.
That's.
Get away from that.
Yes.
With the capital projects. Yep.
Yeah, and we. That is one thing we hope to, obviously, it will not be possible for next year, but we want to look at having a reserve account for our capital projects so that we are not in a crunch to figure out how we're going to pay for this. So if we, you know, can put aside funds, you know, every year, then we can be able to do the big projects and not be having to go out for a bond.
And we can't pay for everything at once. I mean, air conditioning and heating, that's 10 years old. The Coroner's Building started back in 2012. Everything can't come do it once. You have to plan it out. And it's just two examples. I mean, we have probably a dozen examples.
There's been projects that have been on that list for the past 10 years and keep it down just because every year we go like, oh, can't afford it, can't afford it. But at some point, have to afford it because it becomes endable that you have to pay it down.
Absolutely.
What was the second part of that? The change to the federal monetary system?
And has any thought been given to the anticipated restructuring of the federal monetary system?
You know what that means?
No, I think that's not at the county level.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See you tonight.
All right, 3.2, Mike.
I really don't know if this one. I think it was already covered.
Because we went out of order.
Yeah. I mean, I can put the person in the spot, but really, it's the title only, so she's already in the spot. So I think we could probably just skip it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Make enough time. Make a motion to skip. Do that.
No, we love actual items.
All right, 5.1, Fisher's unfortunately, of course, not available right now. But he's seeking your approval for Change Order Number 7 with HLP Construction, ending the contract by two weeks due to material delays in the Thanksgiving holiday for the ADA renovations at polling places. Dates changed from December to 17th December.
Those just date changes.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
All right.
To you, Jason.
Before you, Jason, before you, Director. What happened to the days where Jason was on his last?
Missioners, 5.2 is simple. It's an agreement, five-year agreement with the floor company. The floor provides us with eating HVAC, gas line, we got to do some gas line work coming up. This is simply just a normal professional service agreement with them that identifies their labor rates.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll second. All fair side. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
5.3 and 4, Kelsey.
Morning, Commissioners. The first item I have for you is to approve an amendment to the agreement with Penn Corps Consulting. This will allow them to do elevation certificates for certain income-qualified individuals who were affected by tropical storm Gabby.
Motion accept.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
And the second item I have is the bid award to Michael Baker International for the Hazard Mitigation Plan update in the amount of $128,867.05, and that's an approved budgeted item.
Okay, what fund does that come out of? Number 5.4. All right, good, thank you. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side. Thank you.
5.5 and 5.6, Billy.
Where are you, Billy? Thank you, Kelsey.
Morning. Commissioner, seeking your approval for the subrecipient agreement with YWCA North Central VA in the amount of $150,000. It was a part of the 2024 approved budget. And this is part of the Fair Program.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
5.6, seeking your approval for the 2023-2024 Fair Subrecipient Agreement with Lycoming Clinton Governor Board in the amount of $65,000. It's also a 2024 approved budgeted item.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Billy.
5.7 through 5.12, Leslie.
All right, Leslie.
Okay, 5.7. Commissioners, we're seeking your approval to renew our maintenance on our ITAL servers. This is for phones throughout Cumming County. This covers all of them in the amount of $16,776.59, and it is in the 2024 budget.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Secondly, Commissioners, seeking your approval to renew our Oracle database. This is actually our finance, oh, sorry, that's the next one. This is our Oracle database in the amount of $892.50, and it is in our 2024 budget.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
5.9, seeking your approval to renew our finance maintenance for another year in the amount of $69,295.18, and it is in our budget.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All fair side.
5.10, seeking your approval to renew in a CCAP silent agreement. This is not for payment. This is just basically saying that we would commit for the $9,500 through CCAP.
So I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
5.11. Commissioners, in front of you is a quote to upgrade our current print machine that we have in the basement that we use every day, all day long. They are suggesting that we don't do another election with the machine. So we are slated to get it replaced next year. I've been working with Maya and her team. She believes that we are going to be able to use Act 13 monies for this purchase. And if we get it in before the end of the year, we get a discount. So the new price is $34,553.25. The old payment that they were suggesting was going to be around $41,000. So it is, I don't know, $6,000 decrease, give or take. And they are allowing us to do payments. We can do up to four months payments if that's what we need to do.
Sounds good, perfect. That gets used very, very heavy. And we don't want any glitches with the elections.
No, and I bring up the election, but I mean, we, every day, inside and out, and it is going to decrease our print per page also.
Good.
So I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Last, 5.12, Commissioners, we're just seeking your approval to renew our Duo subscription. We have been working with vendors. I don't know if you remember, but I did table this just to see if we could get a better cost, and we did. We came down a couple thousand dollars. So this would be, is in our budget for the amount of $37,415.
So I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Thank you.
Leslie, can you stick around till Commissioners' comments?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
5.13 through 5.16.
I'm only getting. The first item I have for you is 5.13, vote to approve the amendment to agreement with Restorative Behavioral Health. This is just an amendment to extend the term for an additional year, a year or until December 31st, 2025. This is for providing mental health services, including telehealth, mental evaluation, treatment, care at the prison.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
The next item, 5.14, vote to approve the amendment to agreement with Rogers Uniforms. This, again, is just an amendment to extend for an additional year or until December 31st, 2025. This is to provide correctional officer uniforms for the prison.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side.
5.15, vote to approve agreement with Brian Omar Esquire. This is not an approved budget item, but this is due to the staffing issues that are persistent in the Public Defender's Office, and obviously, they have cases that have to be done. So they had to contract out for such services.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
The next item, 5.16, vote to approve agreement with Kyle Reed Esquire. This is the same situation. This is for the Public Defender's Office for legal representation.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All fair side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maya.
5.17, Commissioners, seeking your approval to appoint the appointment of Kaylee Bento Esquire from McLaughler as an assistant.
Motion accept.
That's for us here. That's for local county or is that for? Yeah, that just means.
We have a new associate in the office.
I get it. So okay, I understand. I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All fair side. Commissioner, comments? I'd like to, no less, ask you to stay, and I want you to pass on, who was in here? I know you're part of the team yesterday, and I want you to just pass on, thank you and to the team that did the recount yesterday. Like Cumming County, 60,000 votes were recounted. They did the entire day, and it was efficient. And once again, like Cumming County does a great job. But thank you to each one of those employees that stepped forward and was required to do this by the state and did an excellent job with the recount.
I appreciate that. Yeah, the county employees are amazing. I mean, they're great teams and.
Sure, I appreciate that. Yeah, the county employees are amazing. I mean, they, they're great teams and, and the guys speak out that worked all day and. Think we got out of here around six o'clock last night. Yeah.
Yes. Started at nine o'clock and got done at six, so got it done in a day.
And I think, but Matt, is it sixty thousand and one?
So there was a couple of overs and so they equal themselves out and ended up with one additional ballot, sixty thousand and one.
Yeah.
But. Or ballots.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Disappointed for us.
Yes.
He said you can take his out, so we go back to sixty.
Judication process, um. May, may occur this afternoon. It's first is out. Um, if not, we'll regroup this soon as he's.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you to the team. And do a value. Mr., do you have anything?
No, I just, we won't be here next week. I want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving.
Absolutely.
Uh. You know, we have a lot to be thankful for. I do, I also want to thank everyone on this budget team. It's. It's, I mean, it's obviously not an easy process this year. It certainly hasn't been an easy process, but. It has not been a grueling process, and I could see where it could be depending on who you were working with and how it was approached. And, um, I just want to thank the people that, that. I did get to work with, that we got to work with. Um. Because they made a, a tough processes as, you know, productive and manageable as possible, and we're. You know, we're kind of proud of the way it went and. Way it turned out and where we are going forward. But I, I could see with. With the wrong team, it could be brutal. And, um, it wasn't like. We came to work every day and, and, and got it done, but it was, there was never any point where you're like, oh my God, we gotta do this again. And, um, and I thank everyone for that.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so on, on the budget, you know, I've been, I've been around, uh, uh, local government for, this is my fifteenth year, fourteen. At a local municipality. And, uh, people said then that that municipality, that you, you can't. Not raise taxes, or you can not lower taxes and. And in my fourteen years, we lowered taxes in that municipality twice. That doesn't come because there's more tax dollars just rolled in. That becomes, that's part of. Production, looking at, thinking about. Making sure that expenditure should be happening. And more importantly, which I want to see us do here before I leave Wycoming County is. As Maya's team stated earlier, creating that capital fund. Have to have funds for your future, can't just sit here and expect that money's gonna flow in. You know, I heard the same thing, you know, in, in my six months worth of running for this position. That we spend too much, we spend too much, we spend too much. What are you gonna do about it? And, and my first reaction was, you know. I gotta get there first and see what's going on. Um, and I don't know if there's spots to cut. I don't know how tight the county may have been or is. Um, but I think we learn in a short time that there, there are, there, there's some path that we cut. Uh, again, I'm excited to be part of a team. That was able to look at government of all places and be able to trim twenty-three percent. Um, to be able to start working towards that balanced budget. And I'm not saying that the three of us aren't gonna have to make that hard decision someday. That we have to have a tax increase. Uh. Or that, you know, I mean, I know a lot of people see reassessment as a tax increase. That, that may make the difference and. And you can view it as a tax increase when it happens, but we're gonna level everything out. But we're doing our due diligence first, cutting the spending, which is something that everybody always says. Can't be done in government. So whether it's another county, whether it's another local municipality. Take a look, it can be done. You gotta work at it. You gotta have a team that's gonna work at it. You have to have an entire staff. Willing to buy into, this is what we need to do so that we get raises. Um, or as, as the media loves to throw out, we get a free trip to cannibals, you know, but it's all part of it. Uh, but you gotta do the right thing. I think we're doing the right thing. I'm excited to be, I, I can't, I can't say enough. I'm excited to be part of twenty-three percent reduction. Um, and I will also, I'll end with, you know, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, our staff, our, our, uh, our residents. Uh, we do, as, as Commissioner Messina said, we, living in like coming county, we have so much to be thankful for. We have lived in such a great community. Uh. And, and although there's people struggling in our community, most have a lot to do. Happy Thanksgiving, Derek.
Thank you. The goal is to get to that balanced budget, keep it balanced every year going forward. Have a fund for those capital expenses. Uh, so that we're not, not using the fund balance. Uh, we don't have to go after future bonds, things like those. Uh. And, uh, again, just being more efficient with the monies. Uh. Each year rolls around, we don't want to stress. You don't want, you don't want to use. No, you don't want to use. And to have a balanced budget going forward and, and. Again, we, we have more work to get done. We have more work to get done. We're not finished. Cautiously optimistic, but at the same time, we're gonna get there, and it's gonna be balanced. And we're gonna have that fund balance back where it belongs. Thank you. Okay, we've completed our agenda. We will not be here next week. We'll wish everyone happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh. I'm gonna comment online. Anything for the audience? Yeah. Thank you. So, that said, uh, we have completed our meeting, and our next meeting will be December the fifth.